It is the virtual budget and finance meeting for June 28, 2021. It is 3:31 PM. We have a long agenda, but I have hopes for the consent section. So the first item, of course, was our call to order. Approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting is the second item. Is there a motion?
I move second.
Okay, it has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we are to the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything that they would like to place on consent? Please. Anything, anybody?
Madam Chair, I have some items I would like to place on consent.
Thank you very much. Okay, what items would you like to place on consent?
So on page two, items number five, six, and seven. Page three, eight, and nine. On page four, thirteen, eleven, and thirteen. On page four.
Okay.
And then page five, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Okay.
Page six, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Page seven, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. And then on page eight, it was an addendum, item 26B.
Yes, good old 26B.
That's it.
Thank you. Madam President, Pro Tem, are you okay with all of those?
Yes ma'am, I'd just like to ask if we would, go ahead and look at poll number nineteen off of consent. I'm not sure if Mr. Fowler can be on the call. Hopefully he can. This is just a very important project to the district. And so I'd just like for him to discuss that if possible, number nineteen.
Okay, that was the shoulder improvement.
Yes, in Garden Highlands, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna take that off of consent. Okay, so, and also, well, I'm going to read through the items that we've placed on consent one more time. So everybody will be on the same page. On item two, we have items five, six, and seven. On page three, we have item eight and nine. On page four, we have item eleven and thirteen. On page four, we have items fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. On page six, we have item eighteen and twenty. On page seven, we have items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. On page eight, we have, item twenty-five has been withdrawn. So please mark item twenty-five as withdrawn. And of course, we have added item 26B. And I will read item 26B when we, well, we might want to put it on consent. So let me pull it up and read it. Item 26B is a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a lease purchase schedule with Dell Financial Services LLC that is subject to and incorporates the terms and conditions of the master lease agreement dated March 31, 2020, under which the city of Birmingham will lease purchase computer equipment to include servers, storage, desktops, laptops, et cetera, in a total amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents for a period not to exceed ten years in accordance with the Code of Alabama, 1975, Section 4-1 dash one-six dash five-seven F. So does anyone have any questions about 26B? Or are you in agreement with placing it on consent also?
I can go with consent on that one if it's okay with the majority.
Same.
Counselor Smithman, are you okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's, then we will also place 26B on consent. And that is on the page eight, the last page of our agenda. So now, we need to vote on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move these items second.
Okay, it has been moved and properly seconded by everyone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so our first item on the agenda that we are going to hear is number four on page one, an ordinance to amend the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021 by appropriating seventeen million, four hundred seventy thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents to capital outlay capitalized leases per the master lease agreement.
Move the item.
I'll second it. Second.
Second.
Yeah, the, okay, so item four, we are ready for our speaker for the day.
Madam Chair, I can speak to it.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, Counselor, this item was actually approved by the council probably around three weeks, maybe four weeks ago. This is the master lease agreement. So this action that's before the committee is just to set the account for us to be able to inter requisitions for the purchasing of the municipal lease. You know, if you recall, that was the pumpers, the landfill equipment, the equipment for police department, just, you know, all that stuff.
The tactical, the tactical portion of the police department where they put four guys in one truck.
Yes.
I remember that because of the gas mileage issue on those Tahos. Sixteen miles to the gallon, so you better put four guys in there. They get horrible gas mileage. Okay, I have one question. And that is, this money is coming out of this year's budget. So is this coming out of a surplus that we have for this year? What, I didn't recognize Fund 158.
So like I said, this is setting up the actual account for the lease. So if you recall, we are actually in a lease agreement with NCL. So they, they will, basically, this is basically setting up an escrow account for us to just have the money sitting there. So it's no new money, it's just money that will be in escrow. So we just have to have an account to account for the things that we're going to purchase through the cooperative.
Okay, yeah, it's no new money, but what is Fund 158? Just remind me.
It's, it's a new account and it will be, it'll be labeled as municipal lease.
Okay, so it's a new account. So remind me, please, where the seventeen million dollars came from? Is that from surplus from this year's budget?
It's, it's no new money. It's actually the money that we're actually using from the lease. So it's, it's like a loan, it's a revolving line of credit.
Yeah, where did the money come from?
NC, NCL, the company that the council approved.
Okay, so they, they're, they're giving us, they're loaning us.
Right.
Anything for money, so, because we didn't have seventeen million dollars.
That's, that's correct. And then in your budget book, it'll be a debt service amount that we pay NCL every year.
Okay, I just need all the refreshers I can get today. Has been a stressful day and my brain has ceased to function, but I'm sure it will revive itself because I have some iced coffee here. It's magic. So does anyone have any questions regarding this, I guess, account? It's not, we're not appropriating the money exactly. We're creating an account and putting the money in it, right?
Correct.
Okay, any questions? Okay, we have a motion that has been properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So that item passes and will be sent to the full council. Our next item is on page three, item 10, a resolution acknowledging that the bid for full color print shop production machines and related maintenance and service as needed at an approximate annual cost of fifty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars for a period of three years from ABS Business Systems of Birmingham LLC in accordance with Omni Partners LLC, formerly U.S. Communities, contract number four-four-zero-zero-zero-three-seven-three-two for the city of Birmingham Print Shop. B and the same is hereby accepted and approved, this being the lowest bid meeting, submitted meeting specifications. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and properly seconded. Who can explain what is going on?
Committee members, this is basically just the purchase of print shop equipment. And it's before the committee because the amount is over ten thousand dollars. So that's why it's before the committee.
Is the print shop still in business?
Yes ma'am.
That's good. Have they been printing while they've been away from the office?
No, they have actually, they have actually been in, in the office. They can't telework print shop stuff, so they.
Well, I was wondering how teleworking print shop stuff was gonna work. Just curious.
They're down there every day.
There's, I realize there's some magic going on, but.
No, it's a good set of guys down there.
Okay, so are there any questions from members of the committee about this equipment? Is any equipment being deleted to make way for these new pieces of equipment? Because that's a pretty tight space down there.
So Ms. Abbott, they actually have cleaned off a certain area that pretty much just opened up the whole print shop. So they have, they have room down there. We'll, we'll give you a tour.
Yeah, well, I, I never use the print shop, but I do like to go down and see how they're doing at classic time in case they might need a ticket to a football game. Anyway, we have a motion and it has been seconded. If there are no more questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So that item passes and we are moving on to item twelve on page four. Be it resolved by the council of the city of Birmingham that the mayor be and hereby is authorized to execute for and as the act of said city, a second amendment to the agreement with Jefferson County Committee for Economic Opportunity, JCCO pursuant to resolution number seven-three-three-dash-eighteen, under which the city, from funds allocated through the American Rescue Act, shall pay to JCCO an additional sum of sixty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-five cents to include taxes. JCCO shall use said sum for single premium payments to division of youth services employees in accordance with ordinance number twenty-one-dash-sixty, as approved by the Birmingham City Council on June 1, 2021. The total 2021 fiscal year amount paid to JCCO by the city shall not exceed the sum of seven hundred thirty-six thousand, four hundred seventy-two and seventy-five one hundred dollars. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes ma'am, so this is basically when the council approved the, the premium paid for all city employees. Part of that ordinance included the Department of Youth Services, which we all have an agreement with JCCO for those particular employees. So this agreement right now, it was just execute for the premium pay for the DYS employees.
Okay, and how many employees are in DYS? I can't remember.
I think the last count was maybe close to twenty, but I'll give you that exact number.
Okay.
I, I'll get that for you.
Some of them must be part-time then.
Yes ma'am, they do have part-time. And like the resolutions state, it, it takes care of the taxes and everything else.
Oh really? So people don't just get five thousand dollars and twenty-five hundred dollars? They get five thousand plus all of the taxes on that money?
No, you have to account for the taxes. Because JCCO, when, when they file their paperwork, they have to pay for the taxes on that amount.
It's twelve employees too, Madam Chair.
Twelve employees?
It's twelve employees.
Thank you, Chief.
But are full-time. And then a couple of, I guess, a few part-time. Or maybe that's.
That's correct, that's correct. It's, it's, I think they have two part-time, the rest are full-time. And it's what Mr. Mitchell just said. It's, it's also inclusive of the taxes that come out as well.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions regarding item twelve?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am.
So just clarify for me, Mr. Mitchell, or these, this salary is just for regular salary? This isn't associated with premium pay for the American Rescue Plan? Or just what is this salary? Is this for current staff and we're subsidizing the salary as we would with any agreement with JCCO?
It's, it's just the, the five thousand dollar payment that regular employees at the city got. It's the same, it's the same thing that we're doing. It's just because JCCO is the account holder for those employees. We're giving them the funds so they can redirect those funds to those employees.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to get that clarity. That's fine, thank you. That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay.
I know, I know the description is kind of misleading, but it's really just the sixty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, the description is a little confusing, but we have a lot of confusing descriptions, so what's one more? So I'll refresh my memory. Did we have a motion and a second yet? I don't think.
I don't think we ever motioned it, so I'll, I'll make the motion. I'm going to accept this item.
Okay, it has moved and I believe I heard a second. So we are ready to vote. All in favor of approving item twelve, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so item twelve is approved and will be sent to the full council. Our next item is item seventeen A, oh wait, no, seventeen. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a one-year vendor agreement to purchase Dell computers, storage products, and other related products and services from Converge One Incorporated for use by the city of Birmingham Municipal Court. The city is authorized to expend an amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents. Mr. Hatcher, I believe, is going to speak to this item.
Yes, Madam Chair, this, there must have been some error.
Hold on, Chris. Counselor, I think, I think you read the wrong one. Item sixteen was on consent and I think seventeen is the one that Chris can speak to. Unless everything is numbered wrong.
I read item seventeen, which says it's for the municipal court, but Chris Hatcher is not in the municipal court. So.
My seventeen says something different.
Our seventeen says something different.
Excuse me, Madam Chair and Committee. I sent a revised update agenda this morning because the language was duplicated. They had two items from Dell. It was inverted, so I sent you an updated revised one this morning.
Okay, well, I.
I apologize.
But I don't know what has happened, but anyway, so. So Dr. Lee, just tell us what item seventeen is supposed to say.
Yes ma'am. One moment, please. I'm sorry for the delay.
Well, I apologize. I copied that revised to my iAnnotate. I can't say how anything is turning out today.
You, you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
Comes to it first.
Let's see if their Ramsey education worked. A resolution, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a one-year vendor agreement to purchase a web-based software as a service, financial and project management and reporting software to assist the city of Birmingham Community Development Department to oversee and manage grants in amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars submitted by Mr. Hatcher.
Oh yes, that is very different. So, well, the part that's right is submitted by Chris Hatcher and the dollar amount at the bottom. So that's like a good thing and then I'll figure out what I did. So do we have a motion on this item?
Move the item.
And I'll second. Okay, so it has been moved and properly seconded. Mr. Hatcher, if you can explain.
Yes ma'am, Madam Chair and Madam Councilwomen. We are in the process of automating our grants management processes across our various grant programs. And the Neighborly software is one of the leading community development grants management's cloud-based softwares that are out there. We've been thoroughly impressed with the capability through our emergency rental assistance program. And as a result of a RFQ or RFP process that we released earlier this year in which Neighborly was the only. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, in which Neighborly was the only. To that RFP, we've selected Neighborly to service our grants management needs. And with any, and with that said, entertain any questions.
Okay, does anyone have any questions regarding this item?
Do you have any, have one? Do you know how long it may take you to make this operational once we approve this item? And does it require training?
It will not take long to implement. Basically, upon execution of the contract, it will take maybe eight to ten weeks to fully deploy, deploy the systems, migrate our existing information into the system. So that will not be a long process at all. The training is fairly intensive, but since we do have a head start, well, many of our staff has a head start on the Neighborly format because of the emergency rental assistance program. We feel like it will not take long to, for staff to learn the system. Now, it will take some additional training for our nonprofit partners and for residents, our applicants to apply for our various programs. But we will have online visual tutorials and we will also be, have staff available and Neighborly to walk them through the process as well.
Thank you.
And is that, I, I think I heard you say that that is for all grants across the whole city of Birmingham?
No, just for our community development grants.
Oh, just for.
Yes, yes ma'am.
Oh. Well, what about all the ones that aren't in community development? Because grants can be a bear to keep up with.
They can be. I can tell you that before we decided on Neighborly, we did communicate with our IMS department and our finance, grants division and finance. And the Neighborly products are so specific to community development, it was just not felt that it would be much of help across other grants within the city.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Smithman, did you have any questions? Thought I saw you raise your hand or make some kind of gesture. Counselor Smithman, are you there? Are you muted?
Hello?
Counselor Smithman? Okay, I don't, we don't hear you. We still don't hear you. I'm hesitant to vote on this because I thought she wanted to ask a question.
Oh, come on, no ma'am, I didn't have a question. I'm ready for the vote.
Okay, okay, well, we, we have a motion and we are ready to vote. All in favor of approving item seventeen, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that item passes and will be sent to the full council. Now, our next item is item nineteen on page six. Be it resolved by the council of the city of Birmingham, Alabama, that the mayor be and hereby is authorized to apply, accept, and expend grant funds on behalf of the city of Birmingham with the Alabama Department of Transportation Local Road Safety Initiative, under which the grant funds will enable the city to improve a shoulder along Winona Road near the Garden Highlands neighborhood. Birmingham Department of Transportation estimates the project will cost approximately four hundred thousand dollars with the city to provide a twenty percent local match, resulting in eighty thousand dollars city and three hundred and twenty thousand dollars grant funding. And authorize the mayor to take any and all actions and execute such other documents as are appropriate and necessary in accordance with the terms of the grant.
Move the item.
Okay, it has been moved and properly seconded. Who is here to speak concerning this item?
Yes ma'am, James Fowler, and I serve as the Director of the Birmingham Department of Transportation. And so specifically, ALDOT has this program. They operated as an annual program, the Local Road Safety Initiative. And this year, the focus is specifically on runoff the road kinds of crashes. So preventing vehicles from leaving the road. And in this area of our city, very hilly terrain, this particular location on Winona Road near the Garden Highlands neighborhood, some maps show it as Ishkudo Winona Road, but it's, it's near the Garden Highlands neighborhood. There's a really steep shoulder and it's a project that's been talked about for a long time, but that's something that we would like to pursue with this grant.
And that's a location where if you ran off the road, you would go down, 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 and down some more. Okay, well, that, that sounds good. President Pro Tem, do you want to speak regarding this item?
Yes, I just want to thank Mr. Fowler and the Department of Transportation and the city for looking to secure this grant so that we could move this project forward. As Mr. Fowler said, this has been something that's been a long time coming and wanted by the Garden Highlands community as well as anyone who rides that road. I've ridden that road, you know, for a number of years and it's always been, that part of the terrain is very dangerous. So just to be able to get this shoulder improvement would be very, I think the neighbors there and the people that ride along that road would be very excited about it. Now, we just wanted to clarify, I talked with the Neighborly president this morning and she did just want to be sure, we're calling this road different things. Winona Oxmore Road, we know it's Scooter Road, Oxmore is Scooter. So she just wanted to be sure we got the right piece of property there. So I told her I was sure that you had done that, but I do want to thank you. And we could find more grants like this to help us out. I would really be appreciative, but thank you. That's all from me, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I assume they're putting a guardrail there to keep errant cars from going over the cliff? Is that?
Yes ma'am, and what makes the project a little more complicated than normal is because there's no shoulder to work with, it's a bit of a larger project than just installing a guardrail. But yes ma'am, there would be a resulting guardrail.
Yeah, I guess the guardrail would be in the pavement. But anyway, it is a scary place to drive past because my recollection was if you drove off, no one would see your car.
That's true too.
Might not see your car and you might stay there for a really long time. So we, we have a motion?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't note it, I'm sorry. Okay, so we have a motion that has been properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so that item passes and will be sent to the full council. Our next item is item twenty-one. Our next item is item twenty one on page seven. A renewal agreement for excess workers' comp insurance with Midwest Employers Casualty Company in the amount of three hundred twenty thousand nine hundred ninety three dollars and no cents. And a buffer layer with the Gray Insurance Company in the amount of two hundred sixty nine thousand two hundred dollars, commencing July first, two thousand twenty one and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty two. Do we have a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Have a motion, okay. Um, who is our speaker on this item? Is Mrs. Medjic here?
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Yes, this is our excess workers' compensation insurance. Um, our standard policy, which we have carried for a number of years, includes a million dollar deductible so that any claims that exceed one million dollars are covered by this excess carrier. Given our current history that we've had with our workers' compensation claims, Midwest um, did provide the lowest bid for that insurance, but it is with a seven point nine percent increase, taking our premium up to three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety three. Um, but HR is also recommending, um, after discussing with our consultants, adding a buffer layer which would cover our claims above seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it would be a buffer of insurance of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The annual premium for that is two hundred and sixty nine dollars, two hundred and sixty nine thousand two hundred dollars. Based on our current numbers, there is an eighty six percent chance that we will hit that buffer amount in the first year. In fact, in um, two thousand twenty one, we had four claims that exceeded the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So in effect, we are prepaying uh, the first claim that exceeds seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then purchasing insurance to cover us for that additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for any additional claims that exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So while it is an increase, we do believe, given the cost of our workers' compensation claims over the last several years, that this insurance is an appropriate insurance to carry, given the risks that we face.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the committee have questions? I don't hear any, so thank you for your presentation. Um, I don't have any questions either. So we have a motion and we are ready to vote. All in favor of this item twenty one, say aye.
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 Okay, so that passes and we will send it to the full council. Thank you, Ms. Medjic.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are on to item twenty six. An ordinance to amend the general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty one by transferring thirty thousand seven hundred dollars from consulting fees, two hundred and two thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty four cents from professional fees other, forty one thousand eight hundred eighty four dollars and sixty six cents from R and M infrastructure, street lighting, and appropriating two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars to non-departmental transfer to Fund one oh two capital improvement, amend the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty one by appropriating two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to sidewalks and fifty thousand dollars to traffic calming. So, Mr. Fowler, would you like to tell us about this?
Ye- yes ma'am. Um, so in working with our uh, Department of Finance and uh, also in response to, I think, a lot of the questions that have been asked uh, over the last week or so uh, regarding next year's budget, um, we did want to try to look and see if we could identify funds that were unused from the current fiscal year that we could uh, direct towards sidewalks and then also direct towards traffic calming. Um, so specifically within the Department of Transportation's uh, budget, there were some specialty items uh, that we were not able to expend all of the funds during the fiscal year. And so um, that's where the two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars uh, would come from. And so with the addition of two hundred and twenty five thousand of that into this proposed sidewalk budget um, for fiscal year two thousand twenty two, that makes the total proposed sidewalk budget five hundred thousand. And then additionally, with uh, the remaining fifty thousand going towards traffic calming, that would allow us to um, hopefully match uh, some of the proposed neighborhood funds uh, to better partner with neighborhoods on different specialty projects for traffic calming. And then um, and then perhaps have some uh, specialty things that we can purchase uh, in addition. So uh, that's uh, it's not a ton of money, but it's certainly a start and it and it puts us in a better position than we are today. Minimum is a. You're muted.
You're muted. So um, I do have one question, and that is um, on the traffic calming, do any of the traffic calming solutions meet with the fire department's requirements for not driving over a bump?
Yes ma'am, uh, that's a great question. So we review all proposed uh, traffic calming related actions uh, with a, it's an internal technical committee. On that committee um, is one of the uh, deputy chiefs uh, from the Fire Department. And so they review all of those. We also have representatives from the Police Department. We look at all of those together. Um, and one uh, different solution that we're gonna um, look at implementing soon actually is instead of a speed hump that runs across the entire width of the road, actually a speed cushion which allows uh, large vehicles, oversized vehicles like fire trucks, uh, they really don't have to slow down as much to go over them, but cars do have to slow down. A lot of cities have implemented that. But to answer your question, yes ma'am, um, we have representatives from the Fire Department that review all proposed actions.
Okay, well, that's good news because at one time I know that the Fire Department would nix streets that they like to drive on. And and we have a few that the, obviously the Fire Department likes to drive on, but the speeders and crazy people who can't stay in their lane also like to drive on them. So it's good to know that we can do something about those problems without interfering with the Fire Department. Any other questions? We've got the traffic calming and sidewalks, which of course that is a miniscule amount of what is needed. But I'm assuming that we can find some more money as the year goes on with all of this wonderful federal money that's coming our way. Y'all just remember that we're very interested in sidewalks. Councillor Smithelman?
Uh, I have a couple of questions. Um, what percentage of the funds will will be reserved for the speeding cushions?
Um, we don't necessarily have a specific percentage, however, um, well, so the list of possible improvements that it could help fund are things like um, blinking signage. So in some cases, you know, maybe blinking stop signs are warranted, for example. Um, those are a few thousand dollars each. And then uh, in sharp curves, sometimes that's warranted, and then also rumble strips in a few locations. So there's a few different things. However, most expensive items are uh, speed cushions. So I would think that um, you know, probably the majority of that, we go towards uh, helping uh, neighborhoods purchase those items. Speed, speed cushions.
Okay, and you may have already said this. Have you identified which neighborhoods and streets will benefit from this pot of money?
Um, not specifically from this pot of money uh, just yet. We have um, it's actually up to around a hundred and fifty streets that are kind of in the queue for being evaluated. So we go through it uh, pretty quickly at that rate. However, um, um, it is enough to to get us started and to and to make a difference with the, certainly the first set of streets that are in that queue.
Do you know how many?
I I don't off the top of my head.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, Councillor Smithelman. I know all of us have streets um, that we're interested in having something done before somebody gets killed. Um, I know eleventh place has got to be on that list because people drive like maniacs. It's amazing.
And that one is on the list, yes ma'am.
Yes, it's terrifying. I almost got hit by a car there, so I know how terrifying it is. It's terrifying. Anyway, so we are uh, ready to vote on item twenty six.
I do have one question, Mrs. Abbott, just for Mr. Fowler. Is this list available similar to the streets that are to be paid? Or would that list become available now that we've approved this item? How do we know, say for instance, just like the councils are familiar with some nuisance streets in their area? What, how do we know if the streets we've turned into you are part of that?
Um, yes ma'am, um, it's not a, it's not a secret list, so um, please do uh, reach out through Government Affairs and we can get a a response back for any particular streets. Uh, we don't, we don't mind sharing that information.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good. Yeah, it's not, we don't have secret lists, do we, Mr. Fowler? Okay, we um, we have a motion. It has, no, we don't have a motion. Well, I don't, I didn't write down that we have a motion, so let's just have a motion.
On the item?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved improperly seconded. I have noted it now. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that item passes and will be sent to the full council. Now, we've already consented twenty six B. We are um, it's appropriate at this time for us to have a motion to um, to delay to recess until four thirty P M for the budget updates from the administration. Would someone like to make that motion for a recess?
Mrs. Abbott, I move that we recess until four thirty for consideration of item twenty seven, the fiscal year twenty two budget updates from the administration.
Okay, thank you. Second, it has been moved improperly seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we are recessed until four thirty P M and um, that's only like sixteen minutes away.